At this time, we'd like the council please come to the deas and let's prepare to start our meeting at this time. At this time, we're calling our meeting to order. Let's please stand for invocation and for the right allegiance. Dear gracious freedom, we honor and we truly do thank you for all that you do. We thank you for your patience with us when we are imperfect. We thank you for the honor of serving this great city. We thank you for any and all who are here and those who are on their way. We ask that your precious spirit be within this building, that you will lead us and guide us, that we will always seek to do what's best for the citizens of this city so this city will be a better neighbor to all. We ask there is anything within this building or within us that would impede you having your way, we ask that you remove it. But we also pray for comfort for this nation as we are a nation that is so well-developed, but we have now reached over 199 mass shootings within the boundary of this country. We know that we fall short every day, but we need you to touch the hearts and the minds of those who are not doing just and respecting human life everywhere. So we bid you to come within us, that we will be better servants, that we can affect others who will be better throughout this nation, that we as a nation will heal ourselves, Father, that we present ourselves before you, that you will direct us in what we need to do to prevent this senseless loss of life. So we welcome you into this meeting today. We ask that you have your way, that we will be better servant leaders, not self-serving, but servant leaders who lead others to do the right thing that's best for all. So we welcome you today into this meeting to please have your way. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, council, we have before us approval of minutes. We have amendments from April the 10th, 2023 for a regular meeting, then April the 20th, 2023 for a special meeting. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Please note that this time we do have appearance before council and we ask that all who come before us please curtail your presentation to five minutes or less. We do have Ms. Heather Crawford from the District Director Office of Congressman Russell Frye, and she's on agenda to present a gift of recognition, but she's presently caught in traffic. So if there's no conflict, I would like that reserved to recognize her when she comes in. So if all is fine, we are reserved Ms. Crawford when she enters the building. We'll proceed to do that if there's no objections. Also on our agenda, we have several resolutions. And if there's no objection before council, I would like to move our resolution forward for the this part of the segment, the ones who are present to receive them, our personal people. Is there any objections to move? All right. Did we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving the personal appearance resolution to the front, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. So at this time, if we were to go to our resolutions, we have resolution number 2023-2027, which council, if you go to the third page, that's a resolution, recognition of the conference of Ms. Deasia Gray. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. At this time, we will have the family members of Ms. Deasia Gray to come forward. I believe Deasia is still out of state, so I may ask that the family and representative please come forward. I may ask Councilwoman Smith to please join me. As y'all can see, your eyes do not see. These are points here. I'm going to ask that these individuals introduce themselves and their relationships.
Hi, I'm Pastor Gabriel Brown, pastor of the Methodist Church here in the Rix d'Or. I am the pastor of Beastly Twins.
My name is Brenda Everett. I am the great aunt to Chris, to me, I'm just aunt. I am Deia's grandma. And she has been a blessing to me. She's my only friend. And I feel very much. And Deasia is being recognized not only for the actions she's done in Christ, but also the recognition she obtained on the National Love Award on the community league. So we wanted to honor her as being a child that was raised here in Florence, but getting through all these great things. And at this time, she's actually out of state right now seeking other opportunities. And if anyone always say what are things that we can do to address violence? It is to raise children who seek to do great things in life. And Deasia represents it. And for you grandmother and aunt, I want y'all to continue. Thank you. And if y'all, if y'all even care to say anything, you're welcome to say something here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. First, give an honor to God. I want to thank the city council. Not only the city council, I want to thank everyone who has touched Deasia during the time she was brought up here from our South Carolina. She went to Williams, went to Augusta. She went to Williams, she graduated from Wilson. And during that time, from 2016 to 2018, she helped Wilson High School basketball team make it to the state. They didn't win it, but we went there. So I want to thank everybody. And Deia could not be here today. And I'm asking everybody to keep her in y'all prayers. Because I think she going overseas, so I don't know where she going, but y'all just keep reading prayer that she go to the right state and represent the right country and everything. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're welcome.
Next on our agenda, we have resolution number 2023-28. It's a resolution recognizing the contribution of It Takes a Village in the community. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and double seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed. Hearing none, the resolution has passed. We're going to ask that the representatives of It Takes a Village to please come forth. We can ask that Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson, please proceed. And as they're coming forth, I do want to say on my part, I had the honor of talking with these young ladies, and they are definitely a positive force in the community.
Yes. I'll pass Eastland. I want you to kind of talk about what you do last year in this piece on Spring Drake. When the kids got out and had no place to go and didn't have to be on the streets. These ladies started a camp and it's called It Takes a Village. And it was so beautiful, the amount of kids that were there, because that was the amount of kids that were not on the streets. So it was a good thing to see our kids loving, enjoying themselves, doing crafts, having fun. And I heard a lot of them didn't want to go back to school. They wanted to go back to camp. I heard they want to go back to camp. I heard a lot of these mothers had their bees out on these weddings and their kids wanted to stay with them. And I just want to thank y'all so much for everything that y'all do, continue to do and understand what we have in our community and as people step up to take care of one another. And they see our hope, they try to build. And so they don't go around asking everybody for money or nothing else, but they do what they have to do. And it makes a big impact in our communities. And I just want to say thank you, thank you.
And if a representative wants to take the mic there, you can have a representative speak. Good afternoon. We just want to take the time to thank everyone involved. We thank y'all, see, we thank y'all. Thank y'all greatly. Appreciate the work. Definitely was a side, a side, didn't expect that. But as Ms. Neese Smith Jackson said, I'm just piggyback off that. Like you said, we see a hole, try to fill that void, just stepping up to try to touch our youth. Because as you said, you started with 199 mass shootings. You know, it's not, you know, it's not that we can solve in one day, but we just want to take the time and try to create something different, showing that there's other things to do besides just painting the street. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say I really, really want to thank these ladies. A couple of years ago, Lachandra called and she poured out her heart on her feelings of where the community was going. And she was not a community member that called me to say, you know, what are you going to do? She said, Peaches, I know that I was a part of the problem, so I want to be a part of the solution. And she's been working every since. Every time there is something, we've called, I'll call her to get input. And she's, she's working and that's what it's going to take. A lot of times people are asking us as city council people, what are you all going to, going to do about this problem? And it, it takes all of us. There is not one person that can do this, but it takes one at a time giving back to the community to make a difference. So I thank you for not just being mouthpiece. You really put your mouths to work and it is making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And at this time, next resolution is a resolution number 2023-29. It's a resolution of recognition for the contribution of the Stand Fast Project in the community. Do we have a motion?
Say aye.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let the record reflect that the resolution has passed. And at this time, if there are any representative from the Stand Fast Project in the community, please come forward. At this time, we ask Councilwoman Neese Smith Jackson to please come forward.
Ms. Wendy. Ms. Wendy does a lot of stuff in our community and always taking care and making sure that everybody has resources that they need. You even have a Facebook page, yes. Helping people out in the community. And what it does is it matches people to the resources that they need. Or if people need anything, this is like a page where somebody can help them. So I want to, and, and not just on Facebook, you do it in real life. You know, giving back to the community, holding events. And I just want to thank you because you are making a big impact over there in West Florence. I remember that day I came down here to that event and it was wonderful to see everybody and you guys giving back to the community and people getting what they need. So I want to thank you for everything that you do and know that what you're doing is not going to go away. Thank you, thank you. And you can definitely go up there and.
And Ms. Wendy, I know you're going to need to speak there. And while she's going to the podium, I do want to acknowledge that she had a major event last year that she held downtown where she brought several organizations together. And I did have the honor of speaking to them and some of the groups there. So also let's thank you because you've been doing this for a while and you've been faithful at it. So thank you for all that you're doing. We appreciate it.
Yes, and thank y'all, council, councilwoman and councilmen. Yes, we do have a Facebook page called Helping Our Community Thrive. And we try to give out resources to our community, jobs, houses, food, anything that we can find for the people in the community. And we also have events where we can give out things. So we try to give back to the community much as we can. And, and we, we, without the help of the community, we couldn't do it. So thank y'all, you all for helping us. And thank you.
At this time, council, that's all of the individual resolutions that we have there. So we will come back to the presence of our first page of our agenda and recognizing that we're still be waiting for Ms. Crawford when she enters. At this time, we're going to our ordinance and position. First, we have bill number 2023-11, which is up for a second reading. It's an ordinance to authorize, authorize and directing the city of Florence to enter into an intergovernmental agreement related, relating to the South Carolina Local Revenue Service to participate in one or more local revenue service program to execute and deliver one or more practice participant program supplements and the other materials relating thereto. Do we have a motion?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it note that bill number 2023-11 has passed second reading. And I want you to know, was that Ms. Crawford who just came in? Council, if you, if there's no objection, I would like to go ahead and recognize Ms. Crawford at this time. Hearing no objection, we will now recognize Ms. Heather Crawford, District Director, Office of Congressman Russell Frye, in order to come before council to present a gift of recognition. Please, Ms. Crawford, would you come forward?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. It is a pleasure to be here today. I am Heather Crawford with Congressman Frye's office. We are excited to report that our Florence office is up and running and fully operational. So anything that we can do to help the constituents of Florence County and the greater P D area with case work, constituent service, navigating federal government, please contact our office. We have folks out in the field as well as caseworkers in our Florence office to serve us all of the P D area. We also have our D C office fully operational and our Ori County office as well. So Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having me today. On behalf of Congressman Frye, I would like to present this congressional record to the city of Florence from the United States House of Representatives congratulating the city of Florence on their recent award, the 2023 Great American Main Street Award. So I am going to read for you the remarks that Congressman Frye made recognizing the city of Florence on the House of the United States, or the, on the floor of the United States House of Representatives. The Honorable Russell Frye of South Carolina in the House of Representatives on Thursday, March 30th, 2023, Mr. Frye of South Carolina. Madam Speaker, I rise today to extend my congratulations to the city of Florence for being awarded the 2023 Great American Main Street Award by Main Street America, an award that hasn't been given to another South Carolina city for 20 years. This is such a well-deserved recognition of the city of Florence's dedication to preserving its history and culture and maintaining a thriving community. Downtown Florence is booming with restaurants and local businesses, residential growth and community involvement. And I am thrilled that the city has received this national recognition of their dedicated work to create such a great place to live. I am looking forward to seeing the continued success of the city of Florence as it is such a vital part of the P D region of our state. That is signed Congressman Russell Frye. I have this congressional record plaque that I would like to present to you, Madam Mayor. And again, what a great recognition. Thank you guys so much for all that you do. This is awesome. Lot of work went into this. I know I actually am Francis Marion grad, lived in Florence for several years, and I will definitely say downtown has come a long way. That was a long time ago that I was here in Francis Marion. You guys have done a great job, awesome work on your downtown redevelopment. And thank you for all you do. You're the P D for Florence and the state of South Carolina. Much deserved. Thank you. And I was so, no, I'm a Francis Marion alumni. Thank y'all so much for having me.
Thank you for coming. Ms. Crawford, I do want to say on behalf of the city of Florence, we want to thank you for taking the time to come out and first allowing us to know about the congressman's office being present and open here. And I've had the honor of visiting there, but also to be sure that you let the congressman know that we truly appreciate him recognizing the city of Florence in Washington, D.C. And I know myself and several members of the council have been to Washington to actually speak with him. So I just ask that he continue to represent our area, to push forward for the things that we need. And so once again, we thank you. We thank you for the honor. We truly count it beautiful that he recognizes us. But also in half of not only the city, but our Florence Downtown Economic Development Committee, we want to thank you on that behalf, we serve in that committee with them. And I want to say that Hannah and Rachel does an excellent job of pushing to bridge the city and also the corporation together. I see Clint is here and Clint also, and also our city manager who served as liaisons to the F D D C here. So I dare not do anything without recognizing them and also the businesses that are downtown who put so much hard work in every day, but also to the citizens who come to downtown. Because the downtown cannot flourish if you don't have the foot traffic and the people there supporting it. So we thank our citizens and also all those who come from everywhere. And the Pecan Festival is a big part of that Main Street Award. And I'll recognize former Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore, the founder, for establishing that, but also because she made sure that she had a good supportive team who worked with her to continue to facilitate that. So I just cannot thank you and the congressman enough, but also our citizens and our surrounding community. This is a great honor and we thank you for it. Now at this time, I think we have several hands up. I'm going to recognize Pro Tem, then Councilwoman Barnes, then Councilman Braddock. And I think for those three right now.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you so much. And the, this is a monumental award. Getting recognized on the floor of the House of Representatives is huge. So that's really important. But everybody needs to understand the magnitude of this. First off, having the city of Florence as a part of the Main Street program is a very intensive undertaking and it takes a lot of work. And Hannah, would you please stand Hannah Davis? Hannah, and let's all give Hannah a hand, please. Hannah Davis and Rachel in her office, as well as others, worked so hard to first off, get the city of Florence noted as a Main Street program, but then to submit the grant, the award application, it was a lot of work on their part. And as you say, 20 years ago, it was Greenville. So if you look back 20 years when the Downtown Development Corporation was first founded in 2003, Greenville was our model. And I was the chair of the Downtown Development Corporation at that time. And Greenville was our model. And so we looked to Greenville to try to say, what can we do? How can we build on that and adopt so many of the positive things? And of course, everybody talks about, look at Greenville's done, look at Greenville's done. But now people are saying what? Look at Florence's now. So we have really have our own track record. We have our own legacy that we can be very, very proud of. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize the partnerships that we forged with not only the city of Florence, but also Florence County and the state of South Carolina, as well as the Dr. Bruce Lee Foundation, Francis Marion University, the school district. And I'm sure I'm omitting several other entities, but then the private investment that followed. So it's been a real partnership, a real community effort over all these years and the community support with all the volunteerism and all the people coming forward. So it's taken so much over so long and we're very appreciative of the activities and the investment, both sweat equity as well as private equity over these last 20 years. But thank you so much for bringing that to attention. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Well, I, I will say, as being actually the first business, a part of the first business that started off the downtown revitalization, we met with George, Oscar James Salon and Spa. And we met with George DeBailey and he was doing all of this talking. And I was, I've lived here all my life, so I'm looking at downtown and I'm, I'm not seeing it. But George and Oscar, this conversation, and now to see what downtown has become. And it has become exactly what the plan was for it to come. And so I thank those who have gone on and, and worked hard to make this day happen. And then we can't not acknowledge the fact that my brother sitting here beside me actually is a representative that is working in the office of Congressman Frye. And so I thank him for bringing such partnership with us through the office.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
I just want to thank you for fighting traffic to get here. And that's all that happens. But very, very grateful, you know, for the congressman recognizing this, this great achievement. Also a Francis Marion gratitude. So Francis Marion's representing pretty well today, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there any council person who, if not, once again, Ms. Crawford, we so thank you for all that you've done. And please share our thanks to the parliament. And thank you for pressing on to get here.
Thank you all. And again, a hearty congratulations to all of you. I recognize there's a lot of partnerships and stakeholders in this that have been involved over the years. You guys have done a great job and the constituents, our neighbors, are the winners of all of this. So what a, what a great job you've done. And if we could ever do anything to help, we are here to assist. So thank you for having me and y'all have a great afternoon.
Will be called.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Have a good one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And at this time, we will proceed with our agenda. Next, we have bill number 2023-12 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 2022-24 dated October the 10th, 2022, and enact a new ordinance to amend Articles One and Article Two of Chapter 12 of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance entitled Municipal Utilities. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let the minutes reflect the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-13 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annex into zone RG3 parcels located off East Crawford Avenue, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00179-01-006 and 00179-01-007 and 90132-03-015. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-14 for a second read. It's an ordinance to annex and zone RG3 Phase One of Smith Field Subdivision located off Smith Drive, identified as Florence County Tax Map 00100-01-265 through dash 313, previously a portion of the Florence County Tax Map Parcels. a portion of the Florence County Tax Map parcel 00100-01-093. Do we have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Do we have a motion in the second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In a opposed light sign. Next, we have Bill number 2023-15 for a second read. It's an ordinance to enter into a development agreement for Phase 1s of Smith Field Subdivision located off Smith Drive identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00100-01-093, and 00100-01-265 through 313. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second. So we have a motion in the second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In a opposed light sign. Let it reflect that the Bill number 2023-15 has passed for a second read as well. Next, we have introduction of ordinance. Bill number 2023-16 for a first read is an ordinance adopting a redistricting plan for three single-member districts of the City of Florence, South Carolina, in accordance with the federal decennial census of 2010, which is our 10-year census. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. At this time, we can hear from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the ordinance adopting a redistricting plan for the three single-member districts of the City of Florence. Previous action taking on this item was on January 10th, 2022. City Council voted to defer this ordinance to adopt a redistricting plan until after the November 22 election. And then on, at the December 12th, 2022 meeting, City Council voted to table the ordinance to adopt a redistricting plan. This is bringing that matter back up to council. At this time, the, we currently have one proposed map, which is the existing district boundaries. It does meet the deviation requirements and all the requirements that are required by the state for adoption of the three single-member districts.
And so, thank you, Mr. Moore, for that. At this time, do we have anyone who wants to address? So we recognize Councilwoman Neve Smith Jackson.
I want a minute motion to, we have some further information and plans that we're going to do before we approve this redistricting map. So I want to make a motion to defer that at this time.
We have a motion for a defer?
Second.
We have a motion for a defer, which has been second. Question, recognize.
If I understand the Councilwoman's comment, it's regarding the information that was addressed during the Marketing Committee meeting?
Correct.
And some additional updated, so the question I've got is, the numbers that are on this map, are they the numbers that were, I guess, a year and a half old, or have those numbers been updated to the current numbers?
Yes, so the only numbers that we can use while going through the redistricting process are the approved numbers by the census. While, there is attached the different annexations that have occurred since the census.
Can you walk that through, walk us through that, please?
Through the annexational list?
Yeah, and kind of where the numbers were when the census was done, and where they are now, and what changes have been, and I think that was the question.
Right. So right now, since the finalizing of the census numbers, we have a total of 35 annexations with an increase total of 55 in population.
The number 55?
The number 55, that's right. So 55 total persons have been annexed into the city at this time.
So not a whole lot of new people?
That's right. There are a lot of undeveloped vacant property at this time. And although you can, these numbers are certainly something to take a look at, they cannot be used in the creation of the new district. We are required to use those official census numbers.
So the numbers that we've got here in front of us are the only numbers we can't consider for purposes of voting on?
That's correct. That's what's recommended by the State Office of Fiscal Revenue.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCall.
Yeah, I have a couple questions. It may depend on the case, and you might have already answered it, but I know we annex a lot of property, but they're not physically occupied at this point.
That's right.
Just projections. So you're not able, basically, so you're not able to use those projections when making a decision regarding?
That's correct.
The maps. Were there any other maps other than this one that's presented?
Originally, there were two other maps. One of the requirements is whenever you adopt a new map, what you cannot do is remove a council member from their district during that process, and the two other proposed maps did in fact do that, so they had to be removed from the proposed list.
Okay. Is there any follow-up meetings or anything scheduled, I guess?
We can certainly do that after requesting council members.
Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
What is, what's our deadline to make the change?
The state requires that itself and counties adopt prior to the next general election. So they have already gone through this process and adopted the new district maps. The language is a little more loose in our ability to adopt new maps. What we would certainly recommend is that new maps be adopted as soon as possible, as recommended by the state, which would be most importantly prior to the upcoming March deadline for filing for new council members.
The other question is, I heard recently that Florence County is going to be changing precincts, moving some precincts around. Do we, and we can't, it might be a legal question for Jim, that we can't, our districts can't split a precinct. Is that something that we need to be cognizant of or concerned about before moving forward?
What the regulations say is that we are always required to look at precincts in order to as much as possible avoid splitting precincts. There are precincts already split through the years. Obviously, if the county changes precincts, we are stuck with precincts, I guess is the right term. Yeah, wherever those precincts are, we will work towards that at the next recycling of this process. It's important, asked about timing, the main reason that this was put off, as you all know, in January of 2022, was to avoid confusion with that 2022 election. We didn't want to be moving lines right before an election coming up. The state law with respect to municipalities says that municipalities are required to redistrict within, quote, "a reasonable period of time after the census is provided." Because of the timing of our elections, council decided that it was best to do it in this interim between the 2022 and the 2024 elections. So that's the limiting factor, is it would not be good to postpone this and have another election occur without the redistricting being done. So that's the limiting factor. But as Clint indicated, there's certainly no magic to today or next month, but there is magic to getting it done in a timely fashion so that people planning for that 2024 election can do so knowing where the district lines are.
So if we vote to approve new districts, and then the county comes in and changes precincts, and that's?
That is not a fair, the redistricting, no.
I would suspect they will not do that until the 2030, while they certainly may be anticipating it. I would think that that would not be practical.
Because they've just gone through redistricting also, and they will require counties and the state have a much stricter requirement on timing. The reason the state law gives municipalities some extra time is in recognition of the fact that when the census comes out, all the census folks have to work very closely with the state and county to make sure they can get their redistricting done, and they have given cities a little more time in recognition that we have trouble getting answers to questions because they're all, their focus is on the state and the county.
Chair, and also have this question for you, Jim, just to be sure. When we got this information, were statistically within the numbers that we need to be approved to stay where we're at, correct?
That's correct. The present lines, which are what are addressed in this proposal that's before council today, are well within the deviation numbers, and that was reported to council back in December of 2021, when the state votes came and addressed that with City Council. So certainly, the lines here are well within the deviation requirements, and it would certainly be lawful for council to do this. That doesn't mean council can't propose changing lines.
Right.
But these are certainly lawful.
Okay. And also now, I just want to be clear, even with the numbers that's being proposed out of the committees, those numbers cannot be taken into consideration because the census is actually the guideline for how we would have to?
The redistricting requirement requires that whenever a census comes out, we must redistrict based on those census numbers. So certainly council can take into account potential growth and things of that nature as you're looking at lines, but the bottom line is the numbers that fit within the deviation have to be the census numbers.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Pro Tem.
Just real quick, Jim, as I understand, this is a plan that's the existing plan, basically. It's what's already in place and has been in place since when?
Well, it was 2014, yeah, 2014 was when the last one was done.
So this is the plan that's been, that was presented today, is the plan from 2014 that's just being presented for re-acceptance?
That's correct.
And if I hear you correctly, the margin, that deviation you're talking about, that we're within it, but in fact, hasn't the deviation actually shrunk since 2014? Is that, is my recollection correct?
Yes, in a couple districts, the deviation, the overall deviation actually lowered a little bit, and we were all very pleasantly surprised to see that. We weren't anticipating.
And when we say deviation, we're referring to the population of each one of the three districts, correct?
Yes. The purpose of deviation for the public, you all know this, is that one person, one vote concept. If you have one district that, for example, was way bigger than the other districts, now you're diluting the importance of a voter in that larger district. So the deviation numbers are making sure that to the degree we can, if we had it perfect, nobody would ever get perfect, but if you had it perfect, there would be the exact same number of people in the three districts, in each of the three districts. That would mean every single person's vote counted exactly the same. The deviation means they recognize that perfection is impossible if you shift these lines around, so they set some standards for the amount of difference that there can be. And the deviation of this, of our lines is they already were, were well within the limits of that deviation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neve Smith Jackson. After Councilwoman Neve Smith Jackson, Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCall.
I wanted to say, I can't approve these maps without having any input, so this is why I want to defer it. I realize this is from 2014, but until I can have some input on what my district looks like, I cannot approve it. I know we had ACOM come in and do some things, and because of some issues, we couldn't do it, but we need to set up another meeting so I can have an input, and then I'll be happy to pass on a map that I have input in.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCall.
I have two questions. The first question was, what was it, is the deviation about 3%? Can I be, can I exceed 3%?
That lettering was too small for my eyes to see. I can see it on the big, I can't see it from down.
Is approximately 4.22. The state requires that we be below 9, and they recommend below 6, so we're at 4.22.
And then the second question I have is, I thought, wasn't there a committee that met on this? I know we met in 2021, I think all council members met. That's my understanding, I think, just the district members met this time.
Yes, we met a number of times in '21, and then recently with two council members, we met with them to walk them through the process, inform them on that, and then...
But it wasn't a committee that, it wasn't a committee or anyone that got together?
No, sir.
As a minimum recommendation map or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. Those are my questions.
And I do want to interject, when it comes to issues such as this, it was not required to go through any committee because each council member needs to view this and have input. So it's not a committee item, it's a council item, and each council member was given, you know, that information, but if the Councilwoman, I would desire to further investigate or view, you know, that's a Councilwoman's option to do so. Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Clint, is there any requirement of how many maps, or a minimum maximum, how many maps we can actually present?
No, sir.
So if we came with reasonable time, you said reasonable time would probably before March is filed, of course?
Yes, if there are additional maps to be presented, it would be staff's recommendation that at that point, we do more of a public hearing process, allowing the public to have input on those additional maps that are being proposed. We originally at the January meeting, I believe, we had a public hearing, allowed for public comment and everything, along with the original proposed maps. So amending that and adding new maps would, it would be staff's recommendation to open that up for more public input, so we would certainly want to expedite it and start the process pretty quickly.
You guys have the public input part for me.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Baran.
Well, he almost ended it with what I was about to say. I wanted to say, we probably need to make sure that we put a timetable on this, because oftentimes, we think we've got time, we've got time, and we never do it. So we put some dates, I know not today, but put some dates and times, and when we are going to finalize this, because it will go on and on, and we will miss the deadline.
Is there any other discussion? At this time, we have a motion on the floor to defer. Councilwoman, you said to defer, did you have a date or time here until when?
Well, we can get ACOM back in here and start on this, this redistricting, so we're thinking maybe until July, perhaps?
I would recommend August.
August, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to defer to August of 2023, okay? And so we have a second to that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of deferring to August 2023, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In a opposed light sign. Let me reflect that this bill has been deferred to August 2023. Next, we have Bill number 2023-17 for a first read. It's an ordinance to authorize the city to extend the lease on real estate known as 228 West Arlington Street and... Street and designated as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number 90086-02-004 to PD Regional Transportation Authority under the terms and conditions set out in the written lease attached as Exhibit A to this ordinance. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion in a second. At this time, we're here from Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a, the First Amendment to the lease that we have with PDRTA at their transfer station. The two main things that this amendment is doing, it is extending the lease. So essentially, every time PDRTA makes new improvements, what the federal government wants to see is a certain minimum of years to ensure the recovery that cost input. And then with the original lease, we reserved two bays in that area for storage and various other things. Since that time, and their continued use of the site, we have not utilized that lease. They have also proposed the construction of some new restrooms, as well as some facilities for their bus drivers. Right now, they are currently using a Portejon to serve their riders. And so in working with PDRTA, we wanted to, again, extend that lease for an additional 20 years to June 30th of 2045, and then release our use of the two bays so that they can make those improvements for their riders and passengers.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any discussions, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed, like a sign. Please let it record note that the bill has passed for first reading. Next, we have bill number 2023-18 for first reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone 136 Wilson Road identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 90097-01-022. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion in a second? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a pretty straightforward request for annexation and to be some NC10. It is located at 136 Wilson Road. Here is a map of the proposed property. So this is an existing single-family structure and infill lot for annexation. Water and sewer is currently available, and planning commission did vote unanimously to recommend this annexation. Thank you.
All right, any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like a sign. Let it record reflect, bill has passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-19 for first reading. It's an ordinance to adopt the City of Florence 2020 Comprehensive Plan and the City of Florence 2020 Downtown Master Plan. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So we have motions in a second. At this time, we're here from Mr. Moore, who will introduce. Mr. Garrett.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is probably my favorite ordinance. I get to turn it over to Mr. Mitchell with intended keys collaborative. He is the consultant that helped us, helped us put together the 2020 Comprehensive Plan as well as the Downtown Master Plan. So at this time, I will turn it over to, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council.
Good afternoon.
It's everybody's favorite ordinance. When we're done. So you'll be pleased to know this is a condensed, much condensed version of a deeper presentation you saw several months ago. Not much has changed since then, but I just want to recognize once again the involvement of APD, Jesse, and Bridget Wiles and their team to update data and mapping they did about 10 years ago at the neighborhood level, but also just helping us through that COVID period and still making sure we had good community input. And of course, CDM Smith regularly involved in the city's infrastructure work. So this, these plans focus on your community's physical development typically, but branching off into things like education, social services, transit, those types of services, but mainly about these building blocks of a city. And just a reminder, as you know, the things that happen at this day, as in other parts of city government, these plans on a high level help to guide these types of decisions, how you allocate resources and pursue your priorities as a council and as a city. Of course, this process started right when COVID hit the world and your community. We switched to some hybrid activity after realizing this was going to go on for a while. But we did have a 29-member advisory committee, a great cross-section of this community, and we did meet in person with that group four times during the process. So there is a community input reflected in the introduction to the plan. And we did have one town hall meeting back in February 2020 before things changed. So most of that was either online through Zoom, which worked terrific, and other means as things kind of loosened up during COVID. At the back of the document is kind of facts and figures, including the work, as I mentioned, of APD, but where you were as a city when we started this process. And of course, that's, information has to be revisited year to year as things change. But there's a population projection in the plan that has you approaching the 50,000 mark in population by 2040. There was discussion of aiming higher and maybe having a higher target through your economic development efforts, annexation, et cetera. But I should point out that the state of South Carolina has Florence County declining in population over time, which is not uncommon in other parts of the country that are more rural counties. But we don't see the city going that direction. That is not the future for Florence. So again, numbers that need to be revisited as things play out. At the end of the day, these are some themes that are built into the plan. And that question mark item, the next big thing, I'll come back to that on some things that stand out to us as we work through this process. But certainly, these go along with priorities that you have set at the council level. There's a next level in the plan of what we call guiding principles. Whatever specific actions you may end up taking in the years ahead, these are some key words, and these are really value-type statements, things that you hope will guide your future, being ambitious, collaborative with other agencies, public-private, being a connected community, not just trails and roads, but also as people, being an equitable community. That equity theme is throughout the plan. A few more, being an inviting place, that's certainly partly about investment, economic development, but just all the visitors that come to enjoy your community. Being inviting for some of your kids that grew up here to come back. We talked a lot about that a lot, and just visitors from throughout the state. Being resourceful with the funds that you have and the energy and the work of your volunteers, and then being transparent, of course, in city government. And a lot of that was about communication. And again, just taking advantage of all that you have to offer as a community for your own residents, just knowing what's there. So each section of the plan has typically three to five goals. These happen to be some in the housing and neighborhoods part of the plan. So there's a next level of those type statements, things to aim for as you work toward 2040. And then in each section, there are more specific actions. At the bottom of that slide, there are five types of actions, really the basic things that city government does, but also with your partners. I always emphasize these plans are ultimately adopted here at the council level, but it's meant to be a community plan, and there are innumerable partners, of course, called out throughout this document for the city to work with. At the end of the day, there's about 174 actions in the plan under 27 goals. So plenty to work on, but as in 2010 and previous updates, Florence has gone down the list and checked things off. This is something that is new. We had the opportunity, of course, with the National Award to call that out in the plan. It's called out as an accomplishment in the economic development section. There are references to the downtown plan throughout this citywide plan. As mentioned in the agenda item, we also updated the downtown master plan during this process. I'm not going to dwell on that as much, except to say it really flows from all the same themes that are in the comprehensive plan. Probably the top one was to spread the success that has happened in downtown over a wider area of the community into neighborhoods, connectivity, things that are happening already with bike paths and things like that, but ties to the economic development section, so many things citywide really come together downtown. We had a request, there's a page in the downtown master plan back and front, that's really that 20-year timeline, plus back to where it all began and just all the things that have happened, especially the momentum has really picked up in the last decade. But that's in the comprehensive plan now as well at the back of the economic development section. So as I said, there's a number of actions throughout the plan. The, by far, the most actions are in the housing and neighborhoods section. I think that's appropriate considering the discussions that we had, the priorities that have risen to the top in this plan. But there's plenty to work on there in the years ahead. We pulled out 21 items of the 174 as ones to really focus on most, not only near term, but as maybe the most strategic things for the city to work on with its partners. So you'll see there's a distribution. Some are fairly immediate in the next year, some are over the next few years, and then looking to the five to 10-year timeframe. And just some key words there on the slide and of what those actions are about. Anytime you update a conference plan like this, it's a good time to go back and look at your unified development ordinance, your regulations. But Aquatics Facility has certainly been, we know that's an ongoing conversation, but that's one of the big ones. There was talk about an entertainment district potential in Florence away from downtown. And I'll tell you what, every time I stay in your local hotels, it's the weekend visitors of the year for sports tournaments. You have capitalized upon that. So you, before this plan was even adopted, you certainly took charge on the drainage matching plan. So that was another big item for the city. So plenty that's there. The future land use map is also updated. When the plan was last done in 2010, one of the big items was to do unified development ordinance, to bring the zoning subdivision and other development regulations together better coordinated. So this plan is really following up now on that and matching the future land use to your zoning ordinance and making those work together better. There is, it is focused on the city limits because the county was updating its comprehensive plan at the same time. So they've updated their future land use map. It was just adopted a few months ago. But as these points call out, it's everything from the areas that you're trying to protect for drainage or recreation purposes to your economic development areas, more of the reds, those colors. And there's a category around downtown, and especially along Evans, which, as I say, capitalizes on that downtown focus of spreading activity now away from downtown, but how things can turn over and promote small business investment, especially along some of those corridors. So in the plan, each of those categories on the map has description of what they're about, and that makes the connection to your zoning. So every time I present this slide, I say I'm preaching to the choir in Florence just to do annual updates and reviews and look at what you've accomplished and then certainly celebrate your successes. But the state requires relooking at these plans every five years, but certainly every 10 should be doing a major update. Florence has a tremendous track record of doing that, so don't need to remind you. And I always put this slide last just to remember that this is a guidance document. It doesn't bind you or future councils, but it, as we say, it guides you in the types of work you do in just these meetings. So I will leave it there. Happy to answer any questions. I will just say, Mayor, if I may, everybody at this day has contributed to this, but I especially appreciate the mayor and the mayor pro tem for keeping us on track, making sure these plans reflect the spirit and the priorities of Florence.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any discussion at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like a sign. Please let the record reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next, we have bill number 2023-20 for first reading. It's an ordinance to rezon parcel located at Dexter Drive at Edwood Avenue, Florence County Tax Map Number 00150-01-140. Do we have a motion? A motion. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion has failed due to a lack of a second. So that concludes our agenda for the ordinance, introduction of ordinance. Next, we're going to have to move forward to introduction of resolution. We have resolutions number 2023-21. It's a resolution authorizing the commitment of $2 million, $750,000 of the East Florence redevelopment appropriation funds to fund a portion of the Levi Park redevelopment project. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have any discussion? At this time, we do have a sign up to make a statement. I'll call for Mr. Pastor Beatty from Levi Park. Pastor Beatty and Representative, please come forth. And just reminding that we're asking everyone as a group, please limit all comments to within five minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council, good to see you all. We're here to represent the East Florence Community Organization. We, I must say first, I am so glad to see money going to East Florence Park. So glad to see East Florence is getting recognized for the folks that are there. The thing of what we were here today to say is that I see there's a commitment, well, asking for a commitment of $22,000, $2 million, $750,000, and it's for the funds for the redevelopment of the park. All I'm asking is, and I will, I'll say it briefly because I've got five minutes, we just want to make sure that the East Florence Community Organization has a part, has a position. It's really important that they stay a part of the process. They must be a part of the process. Today, behind me, I have, I'm going to, behind me, behind me there, I have Pastor Galbraith, who is the vice chairman of the organization, Mr. Kirkmore, who is the chairman of the organization. And you all know Ms. Pat Gibson-Hindmore, who is the founder, former president, and former councilwoman standing. And they're all from East Florence. They all live in East Florence. So what I would ask is, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, and council, that they say something. They live there. And as leadership, we may not get everybody in East Florence to talk, but the leadership needs to know what's going on. And so if you don't mind, they'll have a moment, a moment to speak what they'll say. I appreciate it. But I am happy, I am happy, I am happy to see Florence and East Florence move forward. I've been there almost now 30 years. When I moved here and retired here, I wanted to see Florence flourish, and it's flourishing. But East Florence have a passion. I have a passion for East Florence. I have a heart for East Florence. I've been pastor over there for almost 30 years. So I have, still have a passion for them. And I want to see things move forward. So with that being said, ladies first, if that's okay.
Yes. I'll watch the clock.
Thanks for this opportunity, Mayor Irving and my councilman, to speak out on behalf of East Florence. I love East Florence. When I was a little girl, I walked those streets when the older ones lived there, and I desired to live there. I live there now, and I'm a part of East Florence. One thing I say into our councilman, as I walk around and talk to a lot of our older people, they don't know what's going on. And that's where I stand today. We need to make sure that our people know what is going on and what are we doing to improve. I heard that the money is coming in, and I'm thankful to God for that. And my advice is let us know everything that's going on. We just want to know. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilwoman.
On behalf of the East Florence Community Organization, I must say, when I first moved to Florence, that park, people were afraid to even go on the park. It was just drugs and thugs. There's been a lot of changes since that time. I remember the old motel, the owner of that motel used to ask me to help him sell it. I said, you're asking prices too much. But I did go to the Housing Authority and see if they wanted to buy it and probably convert it into apartments for singles and elderly. I also went to someone and asked if they would consider making it a place for the homeless, because we still need shelter, we still need space for homelessness. But on that, with that being said, the decision on what happens with that area, with the motel was being torn down, the decision should be left up to the community, what they want to see there, what we want to see there, not to appeal. And I will be persistent on that, that some things that I've heard that may be there is not what we want there, and is not what's going to happen. Because I will be just as voice, my voice will be heard as it always has been. And I'm not going to delay and sit standing up here for a long time, but just know that we have to have a say on what's but just know that we have to have a say on what's being there. And I appreciate those that's trying to help get it done, but while you're doing it, you don't leave the community out. And that's all I have to say for the moment.
Thank you, Councilwoman, take your time, Moore. Next, Mr. Moore.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
And my two cents on that is when we were doing the month, this thing started. We had, in this court, in this chamber, there was a choice that our organization be included in this. And so far, none of us have been called, none of us has been notified. But is that the way to live the business? That's what I'm asking. This organization is there for that community. The people who live there have a right to decide what goes in. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. And I would ask that Pastor Beatty and Mr. Moore, you already made, some of the council members had a question, recognizes pro tem, then Councilwoman Barnes, then Councilman Smith.
First off, thank y'all for being here. And as the three of you know, I met with you and we went over the proposal in some detail on Sunday, about two, three Sundays ago. But what I'd like to do, I'd ask our Clint to please pull up so that we'll all see what we're talking about as this proposal for East Florence. And this is a, just so the public know, we're talking about a opportunity to take the 20 acres. You have three acres, that was where the motel was. And you have 17 acres, which is the existing park. And it's a combined 20 acres and an opportunity presented. Let's go back to the beginning of the slide if we might, please. So the opportunity to take the 20 acres and to reimagine it and to reconfigure it and to reconstruct it. And it came about when a grant opportunity came before us and it was a last-minute opportunity to get a one-to-one. And that's where we had the representative from Congressman Fry's office that was here earlier. It's a federal grant. And the comment that I made was, we'll be talking to you later because we're going to need matching money from the federal government, but we had to get matching money locally. So it was a last-minute thing that was presented to us and took advantage. And I will say, Councilman Smith was very, very involved, very active, part as the representative of District One, was very active. Excuse me, I'm sorry, District Two.
District One.
District Two. Was very active with the community over in East Florence. And working together, we got a consultant to come up and to give us what looked like would be an award-winning presentation based on the grant criteria. And the grant criteria would help us score very high because we need to get the grant in order to have the money faster, as what you and I have talked about. And the opportunity is there to do that, but the process was a very short timeline and we were able to get it under the wire and get it submitted, but we had to get some extensions in it. So I'd like to briefly go through it. The idea is to take what we already have and to grow it and to build it and make something very, very exciting out of it. And what needs to be understood is this is a conceptual plan, conceptual, in order to try to get the grant. If we are fortunate enough, and I would ask all the pastors who are here as well as all the communities to please offer our prayers that we are successful in getting the grant because if we don't, then all of this is an exercise in, that we put forward that will not result in what we want. But so we really need to pray for this. But it's to take and looking at those key elements that we have, the reasons for going outside smarter, stronger, happier, healthier and more productive. And then if we look at the opportunities in the conceptual plan, why do we have?
Excuse me, Councilwoman, before you say that, yeah, I do understand what you're saying here. I understand what you're saying here.
First, I must, I must state this. I'm going to ask that we're on time limit. I'm asking for Mr. Moore, please go through the slides quickly so they can see an idea of what it is. Will these slides be on our city site so the community can view them? Would that be possible? So, Amanda, would it be possible to have this placed on the seat of Florence, our city manager for general viewing and also input? Okay, so I'm going to ask that.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I'm, I have the floor.
Well, actually, as chairperson, I would just bring it out of conflict. So I have the floor. So I must finish the statement so I can get some order in this here. So Clint, I want you to go through the slides. Are you going to narrate them, or Clint?
No, this is me.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that you go through presentation to be held within five minutes. Go ahead.
Madam Flor, Madam Mayor, I have the floor as long as I need. This is as a member of council.
As a member of council. Point of order, council members have 10 minutes to speak on any subject.
So I'll take 10 minutes.
You've already been speaking since, yes, you have. No, excuse me, Mr. Moore, I have, I'm chair. I will retain control of my meeting. We started your conversation after this organization. The time at that time was 13 after. So you will proceed within that time limit. Please present, Mr. Moore, please narrate. Please proceed, thank you. Go ahead.
Going back to what we were looking to accomplish here. So you have green space, trails, all of this would interweave. So, and this was something that we've worked very closely on to come up with something comprehensive. So if you go to the next slide, it also, we are looking at environmental resilience, cultural resilience and economic resilience. In fact, we would envision being able to potentially have a food truck court there at some, in some form or fashion would be an exciting element. And if you go to the next slide, please. So we looked at the Swamp Rabbit Trail up in Greenville County as a, what have they been doing? And we can go through those. And they've been doing some exciting things up there as well. If you go to the next one. So this is the grant. And one of the key things we need to understand is the grant was not available for the City of Florence until this year. This year, the grant went from $40 million total throughout the whole United States with a $1 million cap. But this year, it got expanded to, through the federal government, offering $192 million with a $10 million cap per project offered. So, and the population to be eligible had to be a city previously of 50,000 or more, but now it got changed to 30,000. So Florence became eligible. With that recent eligibility, we took advantage to quickly put this in together and with, again, award-winning consultants, community input to try to get something going for us. So if we move forward to, this was an overview of the site. And if you look, Pine Street cuts right through the middle of the site. To the left is where the motel was, over on Palmetto Street. And then you have Pine Street cutting right through. So one of the first things, the Councilman Smith was very keen on saying, we have to look at safety and security of our community and our population. And then you look and the potential plan, again, this is conceptual, relocates the road to the backside of the park so you don't have traffic traveling through the middle of the park. Also, to be eligible, you had to have a, you had to have a poverty level of at least 20% within a half mile. Well, I'm here to say, and talking about crime reduction, talking about making our community safer, the crime reduction, the poverty level in this neighborhood is at 60%, not 20%. So this could have a real potential boom to help with the bringing down the crime level to make our community safer, to make our streets safer. So then we went to the conceptual plan. And if you look, the back part, which is the existing part of the park, the 17 acres, has been reconfigured to make it more functional and interactive with new elements, new features, new qualities, but keeping all of the same elements that were there as well as now extending out to the three acres, which is the high visibility along Palmetto Street, into an exciting element that has a transference in between the two elements. And so if we go forward, these are conceptual ideas that were included for the grant proposal. It could have a splash tag as one of the elements to it that's visible from the street that gives that, has a nature element that's also a part of the interactiveness and enhancing of the community. It would potentially have solar power, which would give the, try to score on the points with is how do we become climate friendly? And so these are elements that would make it climate friendly, including having solar-powered benches and having glow-in-the-dark pathways, having all the call stations for emergency purposes that would be solar-powered as well. Then it has fitness centers that are body weight workout centers. Those are elements, again, conceptually, that we put into the plan to, that helps us with our grant proposal. As well as dog park. This can be more than simply a dog park. It would be a dog park that could be used for developing championship activities and train, dog training sessions. It would have a sensory garden as another potential conceptual element that could bring back a connection to our nature that we have in the PD. And it's elements that, if you remember back in Timrod Park, used to have these little signs with everything describing what was made of flora and fauna. And now we have the ability to use this as an education center for our community as well. And then a limitless playground could be incorporated as well that would provide access to everyone. It would provide access for children of all abilities to fully access every level and element of a playground. And then it could potentially also have our interactive skill-building sessions, which would be highly interactive, again, getting our children involved, getting them excited and getting them to be a part of coming outside. And that's the whole idea is to get people outside, whether it's a senior or a child or whomever. And then taking the elements of the back part and if the upper right-hand corner of where the park is, the redesign would have a multipurpose field that would be able to be used for football and soccer and band practice and even be a community gathering space. These are, again, conceptual elements. And if we are fortunate enough, if we are blessed enough to actually get the grant, then the hard work of making something conceptual into something actual and multiple, multiple, multiple meetings with every element of the community would be critical to our process. In fact, it's a mandatory element of the process. But until we get the grant, then we won't know if we, these are things that will actually come to pass. So the total cost of it, it took a while to get that costed out, but it's a little under $18 million to do what we've seen here. And that was presented to us by the consultant. And I'm proud to say and excited to say that the Florence community is unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable. We have commitments with the passing of the resolution that is before us now. We have commitments from various entities, including the City of Florence, Florence County, McLeod Health. We have commitments from Francis Marion University as in-kind contributions. We have a in-crime from the Convention and Visitor Bureau as well as from a private individual, $3 million contribution matching. So these are contingent, as well as Duke Energy, a $50,000 grant commitment from Duke Energy. So they've all come together and have the total in the, assuming we pass this resolution, the total local match is $8,927,097.66, which we are then in turn asking the federal government to match that and meet the total cost of $17,854,195.31, a investment in a park in the City of Florence that has never been done before. This is unprecedented and I would ask, and just want to thank Councilman Smith for your vigorous efforts and standing by to make things happen on a moment's notice throughout this entire process. We would not be here where we are today and hopefully we'll be in a position to prayerfully get this grant.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
I wanted to say to you all, oftentimes, sometimes it's disheartening because you know, and I want you all to know, that our doors are always open. Anytime you have question, you can question. But also, there was something that you said that stuck with me and you said, just let me know. A lot of times you, our constituents would go on the air that whatever wind is blowing out there in the community and you really not know what's really going on. And you don't understand who's been fighting for it, who voted against it, who fight it. Because oftentimes, those who will stand up to say, I'm fighting for this, was actually fighting against it. And that's the truth. George and Chipper Smith went out and personally got $9 million for East Florence. You all didn't hear that. What you heard was they are doing something without us and we better stand up and fight. The truth of it, when, when this motel came down, all of us weren't, you know, we weren't okay, but we finally came around and all of us didn't vote for it. However, however, and I was with George when I went, when we went and, and got some people to give money to tear it down. But George said, when Chipper came on, he and Chipper were talking about this deal, they were going to work on this. I don't have a problem with that because I love Florence. I don't have to get credit for it. I'm credited by being a part of a team that will do anything we can to make Florence better. It's not about us getting credit. So by no means would I want you to think that it is our heart to ever leave anybody out in the community. There was hard work that went into this. There was thought, there was a small time limit. And there will be a time, I promise you, there will be a time that you all will be able to look at this plan and say, you know what, I think this would be better. I think if you add this and, and we will listen. But because of the short period that was allotted and they had to focus not on a bunch of town halls and that, they had to focus on a time limit to get this money so that they could get matching funds. So please don't ever take our heart as to leave anybody out because that is not the case. But I do challenge all of you to know our voting record, to know how we vote up here because oftentimes we stand up and say one thing, but we don't actually stand behind it when we're voting and you never see it. So I don't agree with it just going on because most politicians bank on the fact that you don't search for the information. So I'm going to say, anytime our doors are open, but I'm going to say, check, check our voting record.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
I think that's my turn. If you're responding to that, yes, you may.
I am responding.
Yes, ma'am.
Going with what you just said, Councilwoman Barnes, I sat there for six years, so I know about voting records. I know about getting, having the community involved, letting the community know what's going on. Community appreciates knowing what's going on. Do we have, do we have to be a part of that? No, we didn't have to be a part of the planning, but we should have known what was happening. No, we didn't have to be a part of the planning, but we should have known what was happening. So I said that you've only been there for three years. I was up there for six, and before that I was on another board for eleven. So you can't tell me about what the voting records are on different things. I know, and I know how it should be. Community should always know what's going on, whether they're part of making the plans or not, but at least know, they could have contacted at least one person. It didn't have to be me, of course, because my husband's supposed to be on the committee. But not one committee person was contacted, not one. I'm not on the committee, so I didn't have to be contacted, but shouldn't a committee member at least have known what's going on? So don't tell me about your voting records and everything. I voted on more things than you can even count.
I, I agree. I want you to name one time that the community was called in by the city for them to say, "Could you tell us how to spend this money?" Tell me one time.
What do you mean called in by the city?
Part of order. We would not have an open discussion about voting records. This topic now is in relation to Resolution 2023-21. So at this point, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
I want to say that this, I love the green space. I love the ideal outside concept. I think it was really good, and I'll be happy to find seventeen acres additional. Because I loved it. I'd be happy to find even additional one. But I want to say to all y'all who did the hard work, I do like it is, it is gonna be something new, something next level, state-of-the-art, that will be in East Florence. And the investments, because, you know, the city is only investing, what, two point seven five oh?
Total three point seven.
Okay, three point seven five, and it's a total of eighteen million. So I really think that this is a good project, and I would love to see it come to fruition because I know that a lot of our, our students and our elderly would definitely enjoy being outside and having this stuff to do. So I like it.
And next, let me, Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you, thank you. First and foremost, my door is always open. When the gathering, you have come to the funeral home and seen me, a moment's notice, and I thank you for coming. Thank you for your concerns. When it comes to this project, this is a lifetime project, a lifetime opportunity to bring a place that I grew up near and dear to my heart. Seventeen million dollars, I don't think has ever gone to Levi Park or any park in Florence. But I think the narrative of the public not having knowledge, that kind of sits with me in a wrong setting in my spirit, because the public will, the public will have input, the community will have input. I don't want the narrative to be, be written in a wrong context. The East Florence community is probably the most sacred place in my heart. That's why I try to attend every meeting. But there's a time and a place where, yes, the whole community, not just the East Florence Community Organization, but the entire community of East Florence was going to be called in to have input on what is going on. Because see, I played at that park and got glass in my leg playing baseball for East Florence Troops. So I understand the enhancement that we need over there. But I thank you for your, your concern, George. I thank you for helping me and you helping me as well. I thank you because this took a lot of hard work in a short amount of time, almost about five months, to raise nine million dollars to match this once-in-a-lifetime grant. And again, yes, the community will have input on what goes there. They will. So that narrative that they won't, I think it needs to be rewritten because they will. And I thank you again for coming forward. My door is always open. Each one of you have my number. And there's other one point I want to say, every community, every committee member was met. Everyone has seen this firsthand before, you've shown it to the public. Mr. Moore, I think you saw it last Sunday, and I just want to thank you for meeting with us, because it was a wonderful meeting. It was a wonderful meeting, and with everyone, I'm glad they supported. I believe in one person on the committee or two, if I'm not mistaken, partner with us to get this project done. And I thank every partnership that has helped us get and grant, get the commitments that we needed to bring seventeen million dollar project to Levi Park. Again, I thank you guys for coming. My door is always open. Just give me a call at any time, or come by the funeral home, I'm always there. Thank you all.
Now I have to recognize, I think we had three other members. Will you all please, everyone?
I'd like to thank our councilman for the work he and the other councilmembers have done. We want to see East Florence move forward, not backwards. East Florence has always been a thriving community. I represent seven generations, born and reared right there in East Florence, right at the park. We have always had leadership of grocery stores, hospitals, lawyers, doctors, educators, what you could name it. Even when McLeod became a part of East Florence, it helped us thrive even further. And with what the potential we see going forward now with Francis Marion and the other donors and the grant money that is being allocated to help East Florence, we think it will be a proud representation of us moving forward, looking to the future generations that will step and fill these same shoes one day in the same chamber and move Florence forward and keep East Florence growing as it has been and always will continue to be. We do not want to look backwards, we want to look forward. Thank you all for what you have done for us. Thank you again.
I think Pastor Beatty had his hand raised.
She summed up what I was gonna say. Two words, moving forward, moving forward. So we need to move forward as a group, the council, we need to move forward. All we ask is moving forward and make sure we have the communication. I think that's where the biggest problem is, communication. We gotta move forward with communication. That's it.
I will get ready to bring this session. We've spent almost thirty minutes on that topic of the resolution, and I, I want to make a statement. Have you spoken ten, I hadn't spoken in at all? I want to state that what I think that this, the project of working with Levi Park is a project that really started out when we first demolished that hotel. And it's great that it's down, and it's good that we're moving forward. I knew the city originally had a design for the front part, but the idea of potential of grant money is a great opportunity for any project, so that's great. But what I'm hearing is that we need better communication. I believe in November, when the idea of putting funding there, the community came forward and stated they wanted to have input. And at that session, I know originally we had Mr. Moore to serve, and I think we came back along in the council, kind of switched up how it was going to be, but it still was gonna have community input. So what I'm drawing from today is that no one is against the funding to do the park. I think everyone would be excited if the funding, if the grant is available, because even if we don't get the grant, we still gonna take funds and do things at the park. But to conclude, what the community is telling me, and please correct me if you, this is not what you're telling us, that when the efforts to do the design of this place, the community was expecting to have input. And so, so that, on the city behalf, with committees and everything, we did not fulfill that. So the city, we need to do better when we're communicating with the community. And then on the same token, the committee members are saying they was up against time, so they felt they had time to do community meetings. So we're at a plan, I think that we've had good discussion. I'm gonna ask that we all move forward from here. We got conceptual designs, the committee has what they need to submit for the grant. So the end result is, we will do a better job of engaging the community to have input. And the long and short, hopefully the grant will be obtained, and when the grant is obtained, then again, the community will be with the members and, you know, confirm what's to go out there. So I think that's the conclusion, that what we said, moving Florence forward together means partnership and working together. Thank y'all for coming before us today and doing that, and we're committed to doing our part to make sure that community is engaged with what's happening in the community.
Chair recognizes Pro Tem.
Thank you. Just to make it clear, in terms of the conversations with all the committee members, the committee consists of myself and Vice Chair, Councilman Smith, who obviously we were very involved in the process. Also, the on the committee is State Representative Terry Alexander. Representative Alexander, along with Philip Lowe, were the ones that got the two point seven five million from the state of South Carolina to be available. That's what this resolution is for today, so he was very involved. We also have the Florence County as participants. On this committee is County Councilman Wayman Mumford, County Councilman Wayne Schofield. Both of them committed funds out of their fund pool, as well as Councilman Al Bradley and Councilman Tony Moore. So they were also involved in the process. Holly Beaumier from the Visitor Convention Bureau, who's the one that brought this whole idea of the grant to us, had, and helped, along with Clint Moore, helped write the grant application, was heavily involved in the entire process, as was Mindy Taylor from Duke Energy, who got us a grant herself. We then met with individually Josilia Williams, as well as Kermit Moore, and Pastor Beatty, and former Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore. We met with y'all individually. So every, everybody, everybody who was a part of it, we just didn't have the time to hold a full count, committee meeting per se, but we met with everybody individually. And candidly, if we had not come up with the nine million dollars, there wouldn't have been a grant to submit. The other thing, just to make clear in terms of who was actively involved and helped initiate this, can I have to give recognition to Dr. Ally Brooks, who was, is on the McLeod Health Board and was very involved? Of course, he lives over in East Florence as well, and a lifelong resident over there, and he was a very important spokesperson with McLeod Health to help get the McLeod Health on board with this whole project. So there were many, many people who represented the Florence, East Florence community, were very actively involved. And as we said from the very outset, as we told you when we met with you all individually, this is a conceptual plan. God willing, God willing, we get the grant, then the hard work will begin, and absolutely there's gonna be multiple meetings with the community following that up. Thank you very much.
And conclusion, everything we just said, community, the city will do a better job of communicating. I know that, and meeting y'all had was after conception, but know that as we're moving forward, the community shall be engaged. So we thank y'all for your patience and being willing to work. Thank you so much. So at this time, we have Resolution Number 2023-2021 on the floor. We had a first, well, motion and a second. We did have a discussion. So at this point, all of us in favor, city probably say aye.
Aye.
In opposed, like sign. Let it reflect, that Resolution Number 2023-2021 has passed, passed. Next, we have Resolution Number 2023-2022, a resolution to adopt the Community Development Block Grant for a fiscal year of 2023 to 2024. Do we have a motion?
Some will.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we hear from Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, the city of Florence is an entitlement community in that we receive CDVG, a Community Development Block Grant Fund, each year. This year, we receive, we will receive three hundred four thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars. We've had several meetings with the neighborhoods starting March 2nd, March 8th, March 21st, 29th. We also had a meeting with council on April 10th here, had a public hearing here on the, in your package, there is a budget, a CBG budget for your approval. That budget lists planning and admin at sixty thousand, emergency rehab at two hundred four thousand, five forty-six, and down payment assistance at forty thousand dollars, which totals to three or four, five forty-six.
Okay. Yes. Okay, at this time, we're open for discussion. We recognize Councilwoman Barnes and Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, to adjust those amount, if that's okay, at planning and admin at sixty thousand, emergency rehabilitation at a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six, no one unsheltered at twenty-five thousand, and my brother's keeper at twenty thousand dollars, bringing the total to three hundred, four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars.
Is that a motion to amend? If so, I'll second.
Yeah. But I think, yes.
So we have a motion, we have a motion with a second on the floor to amend. Is there any, any discussion on that amendment? We have a motion to amend with a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of changing the budget to a hundred ninety-nine, well, remaining with the sixty thousand for planning and administration, and reducing the emergency rehab to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six, correct? And placing twenty-five thousand dollars to, you said, no one unsheltered, correct? Pass me your written motion, so I can make sure we read it correctly into the record. Okay, so they want to decrease the emergency rehab to a hundred ninety-nine thousand, five forty-six, no one unsheltered gets twenty-five thousand, my brother's keepers to get twenty thousand, therefore it'll leave it, actually no longer have down payment assistance in there, which would give a top, total of three hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six. That is the amendment, and we have a five forty-six, and we do have a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I want to, I can't see, I can't see the, I'm trying to find the original. Is that a change from seventy-five to twenty-five for no one unsheltered?
Okay, there, this is the CBG money, and the CBG money would be a spoiler, that the original plan would be plan, planning and administration would be sixty thousand, and usually what happens that comes back. Then we have emergency rehab that was at two hundred, four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. The amendment will reduce that to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Then they will have, there was, next item was a down payment assistance program of forty thousand dollars. And the forty thousand dollars for down payment assistance for homeownership will no longer be in that budget. There would be no money for down payment assistance. That would change according to this amendment to have no one unsheltered receive twenty-five thousand, and then my brother's keeper to receive twenty thousand, for a total of three hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. And Councilman, ready to answer? Okay, now, Councilwoman Neesmith had a thing. Do you still want to comment or not, Councilwoman?
No, I'm good, I saw it.
Okay. Now Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
We are not really taking money. The CBG money is a certain amount, and so before we go and approve our budget, we are adjusting, really moving some money around, certain, only certain things can come out of the CBG money. So we moved it over so that it frees up money in our budget. So we are not taking anything away. We are actually just shifting to give us more money when, when we start talking about our budget, I guess, in the, in the near future, passing that. So we are not taking anything away. We are adjusting the money to, to make more money available.
And, but, and so our final motion, we would not have the down payment assistance in the final motion?
So approved.
So that's, so I just want everyone to be clear. Okay, so we have the motion, the motion, we have a motion and a second to amend. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed, like sign, nay, nay. Now, so the amended motion is, as we will read out, to have planning and administration to be sixty thousand, and then emergency rehab to be a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, no one unsheltered to receive twenty-five thousand, and my brother's keeper to receive twenty thousand. That is the new motion as amended. So we're gonna vote on that. All those in favor?
Discussion on that? I want to say one point. One point. The point I want to make is, I guess, I guess you're, you're honing on to the down payment assistance. We do still have down payment assistance in our catalytic areas, so that's within the community service budget. So again, if there's any concerns about... So again, if there's any concerns about, you know, trying to, for people trying to achieve homeownership in those catalytic areas, there are available funding through the community service budget for that particular effort. So I think we're not leaving that out. But this one kind of bring it up, bring it up speed.
Yeah, and, and just keep it clear, though, we're removing the $5,000 that we would usually put from the CDB. We're removing that. That's clear fact. We're removing that $40,000. It will not be going in the budget for that use. So I always want to be sure that we be clear and transparent, that $40,000 under this amendment will be removed, and we will, you know, modify the other numbers. Any other discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed, like sign, nay. Let the bill record reflect that resolution as amended has passed. Thank you, Councilwoman, for that. Appreciate it. All right. And that was resolution number 2023 dash 2022 as amended. Next, we have resolution number 2023 dash 23, a resolution authorizing the use of a city-owned property located on Court Street for the installation of a sculpture. And we have that on here. Now, do we have a motion or a second?
I move to make a motion after discussion.
We have, have a motion so we can discuss, and then, so we, so, so a motion that we have, a motion that I make a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. So at this time, we are here from our city manager and Mr. Clifford.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the steel industry reached out to the city a while back with the, the concept of donating, constructing and donating the sculpture. I recognize the importance of the steel industry in Florence and in Florence's economy. There had been a lot of discussion on potential locations for such a monument or sculpture, and a lot of city properties were looked at and discussed. The one that the city statute is recommending is the, the parking lot that would be built where the two abandoned buildings are currently, Point Street, which would be across the street from Urban Square Development. This provides us the opportunity, or this would provide us the opportunity, to basically, instead of trying to fit the sculpture to an already existing area, to be able to create an environment around the sculpture. In your package, you have a, a photograph of the sculpture, which the steel industry has constructed in other areas. And land here, my ITP, this is just a, a rough, very rough concept, very rough concept of how we might be able to incorporate the sculpture and a green space into an area that is currently just proposed for a parking lot. So adds a little character, provides a little history, would allow for, for people to visit and whatnot. So that is our recommendation. We have Mr. Freely from Steel Fab in the audience. If council had any questions of him, or needed, or would like a brief presentation on the history of steel in Florence, he's available.
I'd love that if that's okay.
I was going to ask Mr. Freely. Would you please come forward?
Council members, thank y'all for letting me be here today. My first question, when, when Councilman Braddock broke his idea was why in the world would anybody want a sculpture commemorating and recognizing the steel industry in Florence? And as we began to research this, some things came to light that we knew that we hadn't really recognized. Do you know, within a five mile radius of this center, there's a thousand employees in the steel industry? Bet you didn't realize that number, a thousand. And these are well-paid, full-time, dependable positions that have been here for a long time. Some of the companies that are involved in the steel industry started 18 years in Florence after the city was chartered, 1908. We've got companies that started in 1930, '46, '74, right on up to about 2001. So you've got a lot of companies that are involved that are, that are steady, dependable, loyal Florence businesses. One of the things that stood out to me, and why should we recognize this industry? When I start to look, when we started to look at this, we recognized that Bullcraft was called Florence home. Nucor calls Florence home. Carvis calls Florence home. Steel Fab, my employer. Charlotte is our home, but Steel Fab in Florence was our first expansion. Superior Machine calls Florence home. But there's one other thing that, that stands out that I really didn't know. Today, 2023, 2022, who was the largest manufacturer of steel in the United States? Bullcraft. Who was the largest manufacturer of Joyce and Deki in the United States? Excuse me, steel is Nucor. Bullcraft is Joyce and Deki. Who is the largest manufacturer of steel mill and paper mill components in the United States? Superior Machine. Who is the largest manufacturer of safety platforms and, and ladders for access on tank cars and trucks, carts in the United States? And who is the largest manufacturer of fabricated structural steel in the United States? Steel Fab. You've got Nucor, Bullcraft, Superior Machine, Carvis, Steel Fab, all are the largest in the nation. I bet you didn't know that. So I think that having some type of sculpture to recognize this industry over a period of time, and, and its impact on Florence, and what it has done for Florence, and what Florence has done for it, would be appropriate. Questions, please.
Do we have any questions? Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
I just want to say, a couple of years ago, we went to the Municipal Association of South Carolina's annual conference, and they, they were talking about, find out what you're number one in, you know, and, and market that. I would have never thought, I remember talking in our PR meeting with Hannah and members of that meeting, what are we number one in? I would have thought it would have been pecans or something like that. I would have never thought that we would have been number one in steel. And so talk about a story, an untold story, and talking to you and, and hearing that and seeing, you know, that on Darlington Street alone, you know, two of these companies started right here on Darlington Street in Florence. And also, the first aluminum ladder made in Florence. I know that's not steel, but you know, something to be said.
We consider that steel.
There you go. All right, a, a type of steel. But yeah, I think that this is a, an unknown story. I think that several families and individuals, and when you look around Florence and, and our growth, and you see all the buildings that were built with local steel by local, local companies and local people, it's just a testament of this industry. So I've, I've seen this sculpture, one of my friends showed me this sculpture at Clemson and several different places around, around the state and the country, and I was wondering, why don't we have one here? So I'm very excited to acknowledge this industry in Florence.
I might, I might add that the mayor is making some revisions to it, so we'll, we'll get through that. But the businesses that, that have agreed to participate in this with, with me and with y'all, we're, we're paying the cost of it. We asked the city to take ownership once it's in place and maintain it thereafter, but there is no money upfront for the city.
Thank you.
It's a great story for the posting carrier. Florence, number one in steel.
Any other, you know, council members, any other comment? Mr. Freely, thank you, thank you so much for that, and it's been an honor working with you and learning so much about steel industry. And as I stated before, my brother, who had passed, he'd worked at Bullcraft for years. So thank y'all for all that y'all have done. We appreciate it.
And I just wanted to say.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson.
Thank you for the history, because I, my question, you answered all of them with the presentation. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed. Let it reflect that a resolution has passed. Next, we have resolution number 20, well, 2023 dash 2024. If there's no objection, this will be discussed in executive session. It's a resolution of the city council approving downtown redevelopment grants for the fourth quarter of the year of 2023. Then we have resolution 2023 dash 2025, a resolution to grant staff the authority to exercise eminent domain on a portion of the Florence County tax map parcel number 90168. That's Euro 2, that's Euro 2.2. There's no objection. That will be discussed in executive session. And next item would be resolution number 2022, 2023 dash 26, a resolution to appoint Haynesworth St. Clair Board P.A. as the city attorney, and authorize the city manager to execute the negotiation contract for other services. If there's no proposition, this will be discussed as well in executive session. Next, we will proceed to our report to council as the other resolution had been addressed at the beginning of the meeting.
Resolution 1230.
Oh, that, yes. So we have resolution 2023 dash 30. It's a resolution to recognize May as the National Tennis Month in the City of Florence. Do we have a motion?
Some, some.
Second then. So we have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the resolution have passed, and it may, month of May will be now recognized there for its National Tennis Month in the City of Florence. Next, we will have report to council. First, we will have appointments to boards and commission.
Apparently, we have some, there's some individuals from the Tennis Association.
Who wants, okay, all right. Well, let's do this. Let's bring them forward, and let's get that resolution. I do want to announce that they came forward earlier and asked for a proclamation, but I, we've been talking with them, we'd asked if they wanted to do a resolution, they could come here.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Urban and Council, for giving me just a couple of minutes, and glad we were last but not forgotten. The reason we're here today is the United States Tennis Association, a governing body of tennis in the United States, has declared May to be National Tennis Month. And we here in Florence, as part of the Florence Tennis Association, are very pleased that the city has recognized that, because we think tennis is a great sport. Tennis boomed during the pandemic. It was one of the first activities to resume, because it's naturally a socially distanced sport. You're 78 feet away from your opponent, so very little transmission. But Florence has participated in that boom. We've had a lot more people coming to play tennis. One of the reasons that it's boomed is because Florence has excellent public tennis facilities. Many of you may not know that 70 to 80% of all tennis in the United States is played in public parks. So the fact that we have excellent public facilities here in Florence have allowed us to grow tennis. In fact, I see my friend Chuck Pope out there. Chuck and I about 10, 11, 12 years ago, worked on the design and the concepts for the Dr. Eddie Floyd Tennis Center. And fortunately, it came to be, and it's now celebrating 11 years in existence. For those of you that haven't been there, I encourage you to go out and visit it. It is truly something that everyone in Florence should be proud of. In fact, the United States Tennis Association has recognized the Dr. Eddie Floyd Tennis Center as being a premier tennis facility in the United States, which again, we're a city of Florence in size, and that's significant. We're competing against much larger cities to gain that recognition. Yeah, why we believe in tennis? We think it's a great opportunity to bring the tennis, the community together. And the FTA, Florence Tennis Association, which I'm a part of, we're, we're committed to growing tennis throughout the city, which, why we wanted the proclamation. In fact, it was interesting, we had conversations about Levy Park. I don't know if you've noticed, that there's now a fence around the tennis courts at Levy Park. We were able to secure a grant from the USBA South Carolina to totally fence in that. And what we're going to do this summer is we're going to offer tennis programming in that community. We want kids to start playing tennis. There's tennis courts there, there's no reason that they shouldn't be used. So we have that summer program at, at Levy Park. We're also advocating for the construction of tennis courts at Ilo Jones Park. I've been over there myself several times to survey the, the land. There's flat land that obviously is well-drained. We think that'd be a great place to put tennis courts. It's a thriving community. There's lots of kids that are easily within walking distance of adults, so we can introduce tennis into that community as long, but the other sports are there. We've got a beautiful new community center there, so why not take advantage of that? So what I want to say in closing is I invite everyone to, to take part in our Florence Tennis Association Methodist, or Tempest, uh, May Tennis Month activities. We've got a play day scheduled this coming Saturday, and another one scheduled on the 20th. Anybody can come out. It's specifically designed for kids, but if the adults bring kids, we're going to put the adults on court as well. So again, we want to encourage tennis. And for those of you that are maybe not into tennis, but into fitness, we're going to have something we're going to call a Taste of Cardio Tennis on Saturday, May 20th. It's a program that integrates fitness activities along with tennis. So hopefully, you'll, you'll want to do that. And again, thank you for your time. Thank you for recognizing this. And again, I hope everyone comes out and visits the Dr. Eddie Floyd Tennis Center.
I'm going to ask you to remain at the podium, because I know that Councilman Smith do want to make a statement as well. But I do want to just really thank you, because you've been an advocate for tennis so long, and you've really pushed to get tennis back into the community through the community centers. So I thank you for that, because I know originally it was a center, a tennis complex at the Northwest that was removed, but part of what was supposed to take place was the city working with the tennis complex to have children transported there. But thank you for pushing to have the tennis courts back. But most important, thank you for y'all, as tennis players, being willing to volunteer to work with the children in the community. So I do want to especially acknowledge y'all for that volunteer piece. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Mayor's already given me thanks, but thank you so much. I have seen them fencing off the tennis course over in East Florence, Levy Park. And I thank you for that. I thank you for your vision of coming into my district and seeing your vision of tennis. Thank you so much for it. We had a huge announcement, actually, I think it was May, March 1st, that we are actually going to host the Junior College National Championship here in the City of Florence. That's major news. And again, it, it plays to your vision of what tennis really brings and can bring to Florence. It brings and it flourishes, and brings tourism, but it also brings national recognition. And that's the national recognition that we need for all, for tennising, for your community and everything that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would say, Councilwoman Smith, thank y'all, it was a big announcement for us, but thank you. Exactly. But that goes back to saying, for the wonderful thing that y'all are doing at the tennis center, along with Chuck and this, you know, city staff, for all that everyone is doing to make sure that is such a beautiful place. So thank you again, and thank you in advance for all that you're going to do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we will proceed to our reports to council. We're going to go to appointments to boards and commission.
We have two boards or commissions that have vacancies. The first board is our Florence Center. That falls to Councilwoman Barnes. We do have one applicant, that's Ms. Sonia Cooper.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to defer.
The next board is the Housing Authority. It's the resident. The next board is the Housing Authority. It's the resident commissioner. We have three applicants, Rachel Blue, May Holmes-Law and Vanessa Murray, and that falls to Madam Mayor.
I will defer.
That concludes our report.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have on the mayor's report. And as Councilwoman Smith has announced, we have this junior tennis league coming here. But thank you for that, Bill Councilman, because I think it's so important that all our council members are state abreast of the wonderful accomplishment, accomplishment. I'll say this, so thank you for making that announcement. We truly appreciate it. I do want to just remind everyone that as presented earlier, we received the Great American Main Street Award. And I want to acknowledge Representative Tara Lysander and also Senator Mike Rickenbach, who actually brought the city of Florence and the Florence Downtown Development Corporation to Columbia and kind of, you know, communicated with them to coordinate everything. But they actually brought us to Columbia, and they did recognize this accomplishment from the floor of the House and also from the floor of the Senate. So we were honored to be there to represent the city on that. But also, the Post and Courier, we want to welcome them to the City of Florence. They hosted an event this past Monday at the Francis Marion Performance Arts Center, and they did host a panel, which also gave information out. So we want to welcome you to the great City of Florence. We're honored to have you here. We would also like to acknowledge that we have some work being done over at Urban Square. You see some of the grounds now being better prep for the whole site, so that's a great thing as well. Not to name, but also just to welcome. We've had some new businesses that have come to Florence. But I do want to recognize BISTA Bill, which is an organization that has opened their first location in South Carolina, in Florence. So that's a great accomplishment as well. So those are just a few of the things that has occurred. And I was honored this morning to be over at South Florence because I know that a lot of time we are concerned about the activities of the violence that we've noticed. But today, I got the opportunity to witness seventeen student athletes choosing to sign where they're going to sign to go to college. The mother of one of the young ladies who was going to sign, she asked me to come there because I've known her for a good while, and she, the mother's actually a retired vet. But it spoke a lot to cities' young people when they got there. Some were saying why they chose Tech or why they chose Francis Marion because they were saying it felt like home, and they want to be close to home to be around their families and have that family support, especially when they play. But then you've had some that went as far as the way to Michigan. So I'm just going to say, listening to our young people, there are ones who are still choosing to stay home and to acknowledge the fact that we had the groups that came forth. The communities are working together so well, trying to do things to make things better for all of Florence. So thank you again to everyone for all that they're doing. That's just a short report to give you an idea of some of the things that is occurring in Florence. I do want to acknowledge that our Post Department had a unity walk, and they will be doing more of unity to bring our community together, to work with law enforcement, to develop more of that personal relationship. So when anyone wants to reach out, they'll feel comfortable calling one of the officers and just talking with them. And that is how we build better relationships, having that open communication. So I want to thank again our law enforcement department for especially putting forth that effort to be sure that we can bridge that command, that distance or that gap in our community. So that's my quick update at this time, and I'm going to ask that we go to our committee reports. And I'm going to first call upon our Business Development Chair Committee. Pro Tim, please.
Sir, thank you. The Business Development Committee met on Thursday, April twenty. Myself, along with Councilwoman Barnes and Councilwoman Braddock, along with our city manager, Randy Oscar, Clint Moore and Michael Hemingway. We had a conversation related to the ongoing activities. And attached were updates that you can look at in the minutes that gave the April twenty twenty-three updates regarding the third penny capital roads projects, where we are with that process and the roads that are being in Group One as well as Group Two road improvements. There was also an update on the water and sewer utility projects that are underway. And let me just add, related to that is the city master plan, the stormwater master plan that's currently underway. There have been four sessions that have been scheduled. Three of them have already been held. The last one is going to be tomorrow afternoon, or tomorrow evening, rather, at Briggs. So if anybody has not attended any of the citywide stormwater master plan updates, please feel free to do so. And just as a reminder, in July of twenty-one, the city voted on a fifty cent increase in stormwater fees that the city then went and got seven million dollars in bonds to use as a basis to go ahead and get a master plan done, but also to fund several projects, Pennsylvania Avenue being one of those projects. But the really exciting thing is the fifty cent increase, which all of us bear every month when it comes around, that parlayed into the seven million. And congratulations to city staff that you're able to then in turn get eleven million dollars in grants. So that fifty cent increase has resulted in eighteen million dollars. Seven million bond plus another eleven million in grant money. And that leveraging is huge for us to be able to go around and do the things that we are doing, including the citywide master plan for stormwater. And we all know when you build a city in a swamp, it's a problem. And so that ties in with the comprehensive plan that we heard about earlier today. So we certainly look to continue that. But those are some of the updates we got on the water and sewer utility, stormwater utility projects, as well as downtown projects that were done. The other thing I want to just briefly mention is last Friday, our Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson brought in from Washington a couple of folks from the U.S. Department of Commerce, and they gave a very incredible update on the CHIPS program and what's going on with that and trying to introduce to our community, to our region, the opportunity to perhaps tap into some of that funding that's available. And we had quite a broad spectrum of individuals show up for that. And it was a pleasure to work with you on that, Councilwoman. And I just wanted to commend you for your efforts to kind of expand our vision and in business development for our community. And so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Does anybody, any other members of the committee have anything to say?
Yeah, I'll say.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Braddock for a brief response.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Kudos. I mean, I was, I was surprised, you know, at the attendance of the meeting. And like you told me, you recruited some assistance and Councilwoman Javale. But I mean, to pull, pull that group together, you had all the right people in the room, and the opportunities with this program are very exciting. So, Councilwoman, I was, I was very impressed. And hopefully, we'll see some big benefits in economic development in manufacturing, which is not, you know, an area that we're always, that weren't always successful. So kudos to that. It was great. It was a great team.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. At this time, Chair, we would recognize the Community Development Committee Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our committee met. The members are Councilwoman Shequess McCall, Councilwoman Ashandra Neesmith Jackson. And we were given a, a report from the Resilient Sustainability Committee, which is headed by Mindy Taylor and Laos Cooper. They gave us so much information. We told them some good stuff. We told them to come back and give us some low-hanging fruit that we would be able to address. So we will actually talk about those things at a later date once they fine tune those things that they would like to present to council. Other than that, that's all that I have for my committee unless my committee members know of anything else.
And what I'm going to ask that, when the chair of your committee, if a committee member wants to speak, please retain down to the one minute so we won't repeat. So Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson is recognized at this time.
No, I was just going to say we are invited to their board meeting tomorrow to kind of speak about the things that we're doing and how we could work together on some of the, our resilience and sustainability goals that they have. So it's going to be very exciting. I'm excited about that.
Thanks. And also just a reminder to all of the council members, if we proceed to any meetings, we cannot be present in groups of four that would give us a quorum. So we cannot have four members at any of our meetings for business purposes. So at this time, thank you, Councilwoman, for that report. Next, we will recognize the Chair of the Marketing and Public Relations Committee.
All right. So we met April nineteenth, maybe. We had Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Javale in our meeting. We had staff Amanda Pope and Ms. Hannah Davis present. Mostly, we talked about our monthly, you know, City of Florence Monthly Focus. Volunteering Month was, was in April. We did the Keep Florence Beautiful this past Saturday, which was a very, very good thing. I had a chance to participate and clean up in Northwest area, Lila's Court. And it was so ironic because the two organizations that I gave resolutions to kind of got together and they kind of teamed up to do the Keep Florence Beautiful. So Lila's Full Court and Royalty's Finest did a good job in doing the Keep Florence Beautiful. We even had Senator Maggie Glover out there walking with us cleaning up. So that was, that was a good thing too, and we know how passionate Senator is about her neighborhood. But I did hear that we had the largest group that came out, so we are excited about that. May is National Military Appreciation Month, and the city has been, we have really been on the website recognizing those who have served in our military. And our very own Chief Hiler was on there for yesterday as being celebrated for being served in the community. Next month, June, is B-City, and we know our Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore helped to facilitate getting that designation in two thousand and twenty nineteen. And they have the B-City takeover at the City Center Farmers Market on the twenty-fourth of June from nine a.m. to one. So please make sure you learn more about that. And I want to say congratulations to Robert and Vanelle Hendricks for winning April's Yard of the Month. Of course, this is part of our Neighborhood Revitalization Yard Program, and it is designed to recognize neighbors that live in our revitalization areas who demonstrate above, above average in maintaining their property, which of course contributes to the overall appearance of our community. And I want to give a shout out to David Bullware for sponsoring the program because the winners actually get twenty-five dollars. So that was a good thing. And last but not the least, good news. We have budgeted for our app. Yay! So we're going to hopefully get our app really soon, which will increase how Mayor, Madam Mayor said today, our engaging more with the communities. So this app should help us out a lot. So we did include it in our budget. I'm excited about it. It's going to come soon, and we're going to load our community with more information than they could possibly handle.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
And then I want to thank you, Mayor, Madam Mayor, for coming out to the meeting, Pro Tim and Brian Braddock. Brian had to leave early, and then the mayor came. So we were.
I want to assure you.
She actually took my seat when I was up, so I wouldn't have.
And I waited after intermission to do that, too.
So that was good. And it was just, you know, we had those folks come in, and I was honored to have it. This was the first of many conversations. You know, this, this work has been done. For me to get these people here from Washington, we have already done our research and see the potential that Florence has when getting this semiconductor plant. And this was the very first of many. My goal is to bring it here, not to just Florence County, but the City of Florence. Actually, for my district, district wanted to get the first round of refusal because this is why I'm here. But also, I just want to thank everybody. We're now coming up with an exploratory committee to go further because we do want to see this bring, this, we want to see this come to fruition. So we're getting an exploratory committee together that want to work together and see this come. So I'm excited. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And this for the media again, just so you know. You were the original agenda that had me as doing a welcome, but I did not intend to do welcome. I actually was involved in a senior listening tour over at Hugh Letterman Center. So I was there and also attended our city's luncheon. So for the record, yes, when I arrived, Councilwoman Braddock left. So at no point did we have an act of quorum. So, but thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for pulling that together and bringing those representatives from Washington here. And at this time, we will have a report from the chairperson from the Financial Audit and Budgeting Committee. Our Chair, Councilwoman McCall, please.
Might as well be short. What we did in our meeting was we reviewed the, excuse me, the monthly expenditures. Then we went on and we had a presentation by the state lobbyists. I don't think we ever had a state lobbyist because, in my opinion, one was never needed when we had Senator Letterman in, at the State House. I think it's, we're in a different ballgame now where we might have to look at potentially acquiring and getting a state lobbyist for someone to advocate on our behalf. The lobbyist that did present, he talked about how, for a very small investment, how he was able to return hundreds of millions of dollars for cities, particular projects. And I think he indicated that we do have a big need for infrastructure here and potentially what kind of partnership will be brought upon if we would decide to use them. But that was something that we brought up. Hopefully, I think Randy got the email. Randy and Scotty had the email. Take a look at it and kind of go from there. We also reviewed the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four city budget, as well as the CDBG budget. That's how some of the, some of those requests came out, came about today. In addition, we did not have an opportunity, I think he wasn't hired yet, but we did hire, we did hire him. Randy, I just want to take this opportunity to, Randy hired a new CFO, Mr. Kevin Rollins. So I want to take this time to kind of give him. I saw a thunder. I saw a thunder. Well, yeah, I think Kevin was here for a while, and now he's back. We're pleased to have him and work forward with you going forward. And that will end my report.
Thank you. And this, this time, we will proceed to a portion of our agenda, which is our executive session items. We have item A, which is a discussion of a matter related to proposed economic development project thirty dash forty dash seventy A five. Then B, to receive legal advice regarding eminent domain thirty dash four dash seven A two. C, a discussion related to the contractual, a contractual matter, thirty dash four dash seventy A two. And then the economic development project here, we will not have to discuss at this time. And then we have a personnel matter, which would be thirty dash four dash seventy A one. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We can take a ten, ten-minute break. We have returned from executive session, at which time no votes or actions were taken. So at this time, we will get ready to proceed back into our meeting agenda. We'll go to our resolutions. We had resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. It was a resolution of the City Council approving downtown redevelopment grants for fourth quarter fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Resolution has passed. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution to grant staff the authority to exercise eminent domain on a portion of Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number nine zero one six eight dash zero two dash zero two-two.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and second and a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The resolution has passed. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-